About two minutes after seven, uh, on the, August the third of twenty twenty, this is a virtual council meeting of the state and city council. And we'll go ahead and call the meeting for later at seven oh three, which is good. And first of all, for reference, it's a consent agenda from July twentieth. And what would you propose have to do with that?
Mr. Mayor, this is Scott for Patti. Who can be accepted consent agenda as presented?
Thank you. A move motion approved the consent agenda as presented. A second please?
Uh, I second, Councilor Hook.
Thank you, Councilor. So, uh, there's no discussion on this, but a motion, a second accepted. So, Alyssa, would you pull the council please?
Yes. Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Uh, State, I'm State.
Okay, most, motion passes three to zero with one abstention.
Wow. Uh, we're in the floor of this here, uh, Chris Moore, Councilor Moore, is here this evening. There are no public hearings tonight, um, under general business, brought to actual twenty nineteen twenty fiscal year as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. A staff report, this is an information session, uh, with discussion, but staff report from Susanna. And then we'll see what else happens. So, Susanna, you have the, you have it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen here. Let me take this off. That's not clear, that? Not. Okay. There we go. There, you see that, okay?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, this evening, I'm going to present to you, um, our preliminary numbers for our year end for our fiscal, um, night for nineteen twenty, uh, year with our actions. Um, it's important to understand a couple key things as we start to go through the numbers and kind of show you how the year in preliminary ending looks. This is completely preliminary. We do not have all of revenues in that are, or expenditures in, because some of them still haven't come in. There's a lag time. So, this is just to give us a good look at kind of where we are at the moment. There's enough that has come in that we can give a pretty fair assessment of what it's gonna look like. But you know, the audit process us also brings changes. And in the, and when we do present the final budget, after the audit is complete, you'll see the final numbers then. I'm giving this presentation a little earlier than last year because we feel like it's important that with the COVID nineteen and economic uncertainties, we should kind of have a discussion early and kind of how the last quarter of the fiscal year went. And so that way, we kind of know, you kind of see where we're at. Um, the ones that like to take my PowerPoint to stand against the report that's in your packet, just want to give you an FYI. Some of these numbers won't tie exactly because the, the report I gave you and your budget rolls a lot of things out together. And I'm pulling out some of the key factors that, um, I really want to highlight. So, some, just so you just know, so you know that if you go, well, property taxes is this, but then I'm gonna give you something different. So, just so you know. The overall budget, um, was it a twenty-four point one million dollar budget? Our estimated revenues at this point is about ten point seven million. I, and our expenditures, now, when I'm talking about expenditure, I'm not looking at our transfers, I'm not looking at our debt services, I'm not looking at our continues EIs. I'm just looking at the personnel, capital outlays, and our materials and services, the main expenses. In March, when we were told that this pandemic was starting and it was gonna cause some economic uncertainty, the department heads are an amazing team of people. They responded quite quickly and eagerly to protect their departments and do what they can do. So, we put, they put the brakes on as many projects as they could put their brakes on that wasn't already in full motion and could stop. And so, the overall result of that effort to ensure a bigger beginning fund balance, to, to position ourselves in a way to really take on the next fiscal year, we overall was seventy-eight percent of our funds spent compared to budget. And on your report, you can see all of the funds directly, but all of them together averaged out with only that. So, that was really awesome. So, that helps out a lot. Property taxes, um, and levy taxes. Now, property taxes comes in October and is pretty much completed by December. Little struggles after that, but the bulk of our revenue comes in. So, our property tax came in before this started. And property tax historically has a lag time in seeing the effects. We'll see more effects of what COVID nineteen does to the results in October, November, when we start to plan property tax. And probably even the next fiscal year of that, even see more. So, this is why this fiscal year, we came in at seventy thousand above what we budgeted for property tax and eighteen thousand above what we budgeted for levy taxes, which is good. And we did, just as a reminder, the FY twenty twenty-one budget, we didn't put any increases in that budget's tax revenue anticipation of it being declining. If anyone has questions, just let me know.
Uh, one, Sabrina, is it, uh, is it normal for it to take ninety days to collect, uh, taxes for everything for the past, I think bills and whatnot for the past year?
The majority, the majority usually kept in there within November, October, and November, because they're all due in November. I mean, they're all due in, yeah, they're all due in October.
Back to page four.
Little bit struggles.
This is the first time we've asked for a question. Back on page one, it says, here we are in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And we're thirty days into it, and we're looking at sixty more days to have the bills come in, finish.
Oh, yes. So, according to, to, um, our accrual accounting rules, when the fiscal year ends, any bills or revenue that comes in sixty days past June thirtieth, we need to post them back into the fiscal year they belong in. So, our people that may be quarterly or some last invoices that came in at the end of June's work, those things, when they come in, will get posted in, into this fiscal year, yes. That make sense?
Yeah, but here's a question, knowing, knowing what April, May, June, or July, uh, did we have a bunch of last minute expenditures at the end of the fiscal year at the June?
Most are normal expenditures, our rents, our utilities, you know, supplies that we might have needed. I mean, those count as well to move them back in when the bills come in July or August.
I'm probably not asking the right questions. That's all right, let's go on. It's okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Real quick.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, Susanna, I, I think I read an article in the Statesman yesterday about Marion County's already, it's, um, uh, property tax, going with C, it's totally, you have any evidence or any, uh, or, or, or?
Not yet for what I, what I've seen so far. Some of those might be businesses that pay differently than the residents in the bulk of ours. So, but ours doesn't look too bad just yet.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions at this point for Suzanne? Okay, go ahead, please.
So, we're looking at our franchise fees. So, again, these, some of these come in at different times. So, quarterly, we receive our cable and our sanitation and our natural gas. So, we haven't gotten all those in yet. But taking a look at the overall hundred and eight thousand, um, under budget than what we budgeted, come in, the biggest one is our Pacific Power that we receive monthly. These will change, but the main, some of the main reasons for why the Pacific Power looks such like a big gap is one, we anticipated some projects to be completed, Taco Bell and Haycom, for example, so we budgeted higher than anticipated. We averaged five hundred forty-five, thirty-five, twenty, it just kind of bounces around in there a little bit. So, in essence, it wasn't as bad as it looks, knowing that we set the budget higher than normal than the prior year. And then, there also is the COVID nineteen where businesses closed and restricted for another part of the effects of why that is gonna be lower. And I don't know the lag time from when they actually receive it versus when they give it to us. So, the next couple of months will also show even more of what's happening with those, with the lag, with those businesses and the effects of COVID nineteen. Any questions on that? And we, for the next fiscal, for the current fiscal year that just started, we flatlined this into, with anticipation of things being lower as well. With our state revenue sharing, we have, again, some decreases according to budget. They came in lower, overall forty-two thousand. Liquor, of course, is gonna be down because of COVID nineteen, restaurants are closed, they're not having a glass of wine with their meals in their limited hours. That's gonna naturally result. Um, the gas tax is one that we, I really want to focus on. Does anybody have any questions on those? So, our gas tax, our local gas tax came in at thirty thousand under budget. We got eighty-six percent of what we anticipated to repeat. And with the month, the state tax from ODOT coming in at twenty-ish thousand under budget, I laid them out by quarter so that you could see the effects. So, quarter one and two, and these quarters follow the fiscal year. So, quarter one is July, August, September. So, the third, the end of the third quarter is when you started, the, the COVID started in that March. The gas tax from the state is a lag time by the time it gets to us. And you can see in quarter four, it's pretty low. The next quarter could be lower because it's gonna be a little bit more of a lag time. And then you can see in the local gas tax that we're experiencing the decline. This is something we're gonna need to watch closely and pay attention to. In the budget for the new year, we did do twenty percent under of our eighteen nineteen actuals anticipation for this. But we can see the, the moving downward trend. Charge for service, now, when a lot of the cities with this COVID have all different types of response effects, cities that are more focused on, um, travel and hotels and local taxes that, when everything froze, is gonna see a harder impact. For us, a majority of ours is charge for service and property tax. Since property tax is a slower turning ship, our charge for service is one that we, we will be watching very closely. And then five hundred thirty thousand is what's coming under budget this, uh, for now. And SDCs is a big part of that number because SDC projects got stopped. And are didn't get, or just didn't happen like they had planned for like Taco Bell even itself didn't get finished. So, that makes sense because that's all based on movement. Where utilities are driven by your, our fees. Water, more cap is an effect on the water for why it's two hundred thousand under budget. Because when they close with bankruptcy, they left us owing a substantial amount of money. So, that's part of the impact for there. Um, we also saw less movement, so we didn't have as many movement fees. And, and that ties back to the, the growth and development for the, even the SDC funds. So, those things were lowered. So, these are the kind of things that have impacted our charge for service revenues where they come that low under budget.
Susanna, can you go wrap one slide or one? There we go. Um, on SDCs, where those estimates were reticating on eighteen billion more than they did, I, I, I think much of this is this. Um, what, that two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars that we didn't get, uh, not just Taco Bell, but is it Tatum also?
None of this, Taco Bell, none of it, Tatum, some of it is us projecting projects that we thought might have happened that didn't get to happen. So, it's kind of a combination of all of those. Because everything, we try to think of, Lance does a pretty good job of estimating what projects you think will get completed in the fiscal year.
Let me, uh, let me, uh, speak to that. That, that two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars really doesn't go into our budget. We don't really use that for anything other than a SDC project.
Right, right.
So, it really doesn't affect general fund at all. These are just projections from Hayden Homes, Virginia Terrace, Taco Bell. These are projects that were forecasted in nineteen twenty year, uh, that didn't come to fruition because of COVID.
Okay. All right, thank you, Lance.
All right.
Suzanne, go ahead. Unless there's other questions. I believe you're the only one asking a question. I got two, please. Suzanne?
Okay. In summary, understanding that we can see there's definitely declining revenues in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year. Um, and we still don't have a full picture of what the impact of COVID nineteen is really gonna do. We're gonna be monitoring this very closely and, and meeting with the team on a regular basis to really strategically plan what we can and cannot do project wise or anything as we watch this point forward. This is gonna be an interesting future year because of so many uncertainties. The next quarter will help us see more, or each quarter goes by will help us see more of what's happening. Any questions on that or thought comments?
Well, just into this, this is, this is, oh, uh, Suzanne, just in this first month of this first quarter within here, uh, are we already cutting back on some projects?
We haven't really started any yet. We're waiting. Lance has some stuff in the words, but nothing's actually really started for any capital outlay projects. I mean, we do have the pool coming to do its resurfacing that we have to do.
Right.
But we don't have anything like major just yet.
Okay, all right. Go ahead. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, did we put a hold on the, the street resurfacing projects also?
Uh, no, I was gonna say some, pop in and say that, uh, we had a discussion, uh, a week or so ago, myself, Keith, and, uh, Susanna regarding the Marion County project that's supposed to take place on the twenty-fourth, I believe. I don't have it right in front of me, of August. Uh, we decided to move forward with that because we spent so long coming to an agreement with Marion County. We didn't want to just back out of it. Feel that we have funds to do that. The, the other front, the other projects that we have going on in the streets, we've already started backing up a lot of that. We're not doing as much striping. We're not doing, you know, we're just backing up projects. We feel comfortable with where we're at. And after the paving projects are over, um, we will be really watching our budget really quite seriously. Um, I did want to add, um, a portion of that paving, a quarter of the paving, uh, funds come directly from the state, or SDIP funds. So, we'll be recouping, uh, probably ninety thousand dollars of the three hundred and forty that it's gonna cost us to roll that paving, um, from the state. And that'll take place probably in September, we'll recoup those funds. So, we decided to go forward because of that.
Go ahead.
And we'll continue to meet as a staff on a regular basis and strategically look at what we do have and what is happening and what projects that we can be going forward that are critical that we need to do. I mean, one of the projects that we're definitely gonna do, like I said, is resurface the pool. We need to replace the boiler. Um, that is critical because it would cause a serious full closure. So, we're just trying to plan those very specifically and how, um, I am able to get us some um, remakes back on the boiler and stuff that will help offset the expenses. So, we're also looking at things like that on some of the projects that just cannot wait on. That answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Thank you.
It's, we don't know what's happening next. Any other questions on that?
Up so far, go ahead.
On a positive note, we do have CARE Act funding coming to us. It'll help offset the unanticipated expenses that relate to COVID nineteen. So, this is a completely reimbursement, um, grant. So, we need to spend the money and then send in the, the reimbursement. We had two applications we were able to submit so far. The first one was thirty-two thousand, the second was about thirty-seven. We're receiving the funds within, within under thirty days. So, the first one we've already gotten back. The second one, we just sent it out last week. We haven't seen that come in yet. So, that is definitely on the help. All, all in all, we've been awarded two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we get to spend by, until the, up to the end of December. Um, and those are all going for COVID assets, PPEs, working tele, teleworking costs for that, all of our Zoom and electronic meetings, those kind of things, things that relate to that stuff. So, that is a positive and a not so positive budget message.
Good. Thank you, Suzanne. Go ahead.
That's all I have. So, is any other questions on anything that I presented that you didn't get a chance to ask or clarity is?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Uh, Susanna, can you just, can you, um, can you just say again, what are you wanting to use the funds for?
You said COVID expensive, but you, you know, you gave some examples, but can you repeat yourself, please?
Okay, we go for our PPEs or COVID expenses for our staff. Any staff hours that are doing COVID related ad stuff? Um, or the, the cost for us to work remotely and do our Zoom meetings and things like that. They cannot be used to replace revenue, not at this point. So, our expenses, those kind of expenses at this point is what they're for.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Shall we let Susanna go and just move this into a discussion case? Uh, I don't know, maybe, maybe stick around if you can, Susanna.
I'm here, I'll go anywhere.
Now, maybe other questions come up as we get into a discussion of all this, but let's go ahead and move into that. Um, um, what, what, what is happening here? That's a, then should we be here?
Yes, right, Councilor.
Yes, I have, Councilor Patty.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, I, I don't know if this question for staff, but I don't know off the top of my head, is there any, I don't, I hesitate to use this term, but is there any free money that we're missing out on because we're not able to put out the funds? Because we're being cautious here. Are we missing any opportunities at this point because of where our staff or keep? Maybe this is a question.
What's running time?
The land task projects that, um, he can answer to that we are watching closely that, but I, that we might be able to use? Lance, are you still there?
I just had to put back into the room, but I'm here. David has an excellent question. Keith and I had a conversation about that last week, um, regarding the secondary water source. As you know, we were awarded that contract, I just, uh, awarded money, hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, which is fifty percent of the secondary water source project. We were awarded that. I'm, uh, I'm still waiting the contract. It should be coming to me this week. But Keith and I had a discussion whether or not we wanted to go forward with that, um, because of the tight dollars. And we were gonna wait till we have the contract and we're gonna go through it again. But that'll be a project that we could discuss with council. Obviously, if we want to go forward, those will be SDC dollars. We do have the funds in SDCs to do that. Um, but that's something that we'll be discussing in the near future.
Okay, thanks.
I, and, and one last thing, I will be bringing that to council since it's, uh, the amount for the project itself is three hundred thousand dollars. I have to bring it to you folks to make a decision whether or not we want to go forward. So, you'll know about it, uh, well before we decide.
Okay, very good. Okay, so that was just my main thing. It, uh, it at least is a visual council that served it. We're not just getting out of here. They're trying to have, they'll have to put out, uh, junction, uh, problems.
Counselor, should you want to have Keith attack that one? Uh, just to see what, what his input might be? And we heard from Lance, we heard from Suzanne, uh, Keith, have you, uh, got some thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, I, I think, I think Lance, Lance and Susanna have talked about it. I mean, what we're having is a lot of conversations now to, um, just discuss projects that we have budgeted, discuss what the budget's looking like, to have conversations about, um, all the other things that go into it. You know, going back to the, the paving project that we have with Marion County, um, you know, to look at the, the dollars, look at the agreement, look at sort of the bang for the buck, uh, look at other projects that we have going forward for the year, um, and where we're at financially. You know, Susanna's part of those conversations as well. Uh, the same thing with the secondary water source. It's a primary, oh, sorry. Uh, it's a primary goal and it's something we think is really important. So, um, you know, we, we have that budgeted. Uh, we have Susanna and we talked about doing this early and having this conversation now. And I think we'll be having a lot of conversations going forward about, um, the financial impacts of COVID in our budget because it's gonna be so important. And it's important for you as council members, it's important for the community to understand, uh, what we're facing and what we're doing. And then to help get guidance from all of you as well. So, we know as we're having these conversations, um, whether we feel like there's gonna be, uh, the support there and the understanding and, and sort of the give and take that might have to happen with some of these decisions that we have. Uh, when we made our budget, uh, presentation in May, we talked about, um, our budget was basically out of date when we presented it. Uh, we talked about the major shift that happened in, in March, uh, with, with spending, with budgeting, with, with everything else. And now we're starting to see that impact. So, we're having a lot of conversations right now that, that kind of relate to, to all of these things. It's hard, um, when you get a situation, you know, we weren't sure with the state with the secondary water source, whether they were gonna follow through. Um, you know, state has started canceling some projects because of financial difficulties they're facing. Uh, we know about Marion County with that fifteen thousand dollar grant that we have, you know, they're unable to fulfill that obligation because of, of, uh, revenue they're not receiving from, um, from the gambling, if you will. So, but you know, when you get matching dollars from the state, it's, it's really hard to say no. So, what money we do spend, it's always nice when you can get, um, you know, exponentially increase your spending through, through some of those things. So, those are projects that I think, uh, we're much more inclined to try to work with when, when we're getting, you know, more bang for our buck, to use the term, uh, with that. So, um, like Lance said, we have that on the agenda. And Lance, you can help me remember. I think it's the next meeting we're planning on potentially ringing that forward, depending on when that contract comes in. Um, so we can have the discussions and we can look at the overall budget and kind of see what's going on and, and what's happening um, so that we can try to make informed decisions and, and be smart about how we're, how we're spending money, um, going forward. So, I think I gave a long-winded answer on what was maybe a simple question, but I hope that, that helps.
All right, thank you. Uh, Lance, a question from this end of the, of the council. Uh, the, the fifth street engineering project, is that one going to be put off? Uh, it's, it's, uh, I don't, we wouldn't have to, but, but that may be one that would get delayed.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think that is a project that will be delayed. Uh, there is projects that we've spent money on in the last two years. The Kendall Way Street, uh, reconstruction project, we've spent money on that to be designed the last two years. So, those plans are ready to go if we come up with the funds to do that. Uh, so I would, I would recommend that we put the fifth street project on hold in our capital improvement projects. And if we decide we want to go. And if we decide we want to go forward with another street project in the next fiscal year, I would recommend, in fact, I have it on the capital improvement plan as Kendall Way, finish that off. Um, we have the plans ready to go, they've been approved by our city engineer. So yeah, Lance, to your request, Fifth Street would be probably moved down the list until our economy comes back.
Okay, thank you. All right, other questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, oh, oh, sorry. I'll just jump in with what Lance said. I mean, of course, we're going to look at the numbers and, and December, if, if the, you know, if the gas tax is a little better than we thought and our number's a little bit better, that's going to make us feel more comfortable moving forward with the design on Fifth Street and that roundabout design on Golf Wheel Co Shaft. I mean, both those are projects that, that I think we're really invested in and we really want to see happen. Um, so, uh, that's going to be part of the determination is just as we go forward. For now, like Lance said, we're kind of slowing down and we'll, we'll let kind of the numbers dictate what our thought process is going forward. So I just wanted to add to it, I think Lance did a nice job answering, I just wanted to add that component.
Do you want to add a question, yes, the order?
Uh, Councilor.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So as we're talking about kind of the revenue here, um, I, I wanted to make a comment that I was talking to a community member regarding our pool. Um, and like they've been trying to sign up, so it sounds like there is quite a, a, a desire for people to go and use the pool and pay the fees into the pool. But they're having a hard time signing up because it's always full every time they go to sign up. Um, so I'm just wondering if there's anything that we can do to increase, like, the amount of, of spots or time or extend the time to allow people to come in and use that more? Because it, it sounds like they're maxing out.
They're, um, they're not maxing out. So I'm not sure, there's a couple key classes, but I had Billy give me some numbers just to kind of see. On the average, we're doing about half of our capacity. So in, they're supposed to cancel if they register for a spot and don't use it. So I suggest that the council, that the community member that keeps getting that it's full, these will probably call and talk to somebody at the pool and, and directly and find out. Maybe when they did look in, it was full and then somebody dropped out and there was an opening. Or they're trying to do the one or two key classes that are, that are being closer to full. So I hope that person follows up.
Suzanne, I'm wondering if there's like, uh, like, is there some type of a, a penalty if they don't show up for the class or something? Because I mean, if people are just going on and signing up and then not showing up, um, and that, you know, I don't know, it just, I, I feel like the pool is still like kind of an issue here. I guess if they're not maxing out, then it's not a discussion for this, this topic, so.
Yeah, we're going to give you a more full update on the next agenda, next council meeting.
Awesome.
What I have heard from Billy is that there hasn't been any issues for the people wanting to come. And we're, we're staying at about half, a little more than half in that range for the classes.
Okay, well, um, if you can maybe tap on the Billy that, uh, you know, there, there is at least one community member that really wants to use the pool and is trying to sign up for it and it's full every time, so you get put on the waitlist every time.
If she's happy, if that person's doing the last one, there's only, only three people or whatever can do that. Have her call, have that person call about it too, just directly talk to Billy. Right, people want him to not get to go.
Right. Someone else? Or other questions?
I do want to add a point that when we did write the 1920 budget, we did lower revenues. I mentioned that throughout my presentation, but I kind of want to bring that back around. So even though we were watching and we're strategically planning on what projects we really should take on, we did anticipate to be lower. We just don't know if we did anticipate low enough or what will happen. So that's kind of why we're being, weighing out those projects and what catalog projects we really should do. I mean, the everyday activity that needs to get done and still has to get done regardless. So just to remind that piece as we move forward.
Other, other questions, your comments, your thoughts on, on any of this? Well, let's go to other things of interest then. What's happened in the last couple weeks that we need to think about? Just as an information on information basis. Anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I did, I think, I, something that I wanted to bring up and see if the council wanted to put it on the agenda, I brought it up before, um, maybe didn't word it exactly how I wanted to word it. But there have been several times where a counselor has asked a question and Keith can't answer because he's not a lawyer and we don't have our lawyer at our meetings. And I mentioned that, um, one of our neighboring towns, Mosi Vee, has, has their lawyer come to their meeting once, one of their meetings once a month. And so I'd like to put it, if we're on an agreement, to have it put on the agenda to just have a conversation about, um, access to our lawyer and it says in our, um, in our council rules that only the mayor and the council president can, um, reach out to the, the lawyer once a month. And so that might require us changing our council rules. But I just want to be able to have a conversation and, um, more access to our lawyer. Uh, because I don't think it's very fair to put Keith in a position to try to answer those questions, but then also make decisions, um, with, you know, with, with part of the information when we really have those questions for, you know, somebody that, you know, we can potentially get that information from.
All right, so, um, on your council discussion? Yeah, but then all that, you know, let's do that.
Yeah, thank you so much, uh, Councilor, for bringing that because I, I, uh, agree wholeheartedly with everything that you said there.
Other, other round of thoughts you're achieving? Okay, well, we've brought that up.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have one more thing. Um, it was mentioned to me that, um, I think it was brought up at our last meeting when I wasn't, uh, present, that, um, we have public comment where people can sign up and they can call in. But it's, I believe that's a change to what we have previously had and I didn't, I wasn't, I listened. Um, I wasn't aware of that or to be able to tell people that that was an option. I'm just wondering if we can make that information available, uh, to, to more people so that they know that that's an option. Because I would tell more people about it, like, you can call in, if I knew that was a.
So that was in reference specifically to the public hearing testimony?
Okay.
And so that we do when we have a public hearing, we'll put that as one of the options on the agenda is they can do written testimony, if they want to give verbal testimony, to reach out to us so that we can, uh, make sure that they have access to it, whether it's they wanted to come in person or, uh, we could have them join the Zoom call.
Mr. Mayor? Is that an option that we could have on a regular basis, not just for public hearings?
As for that, that would be, I mean, it, it would really be probably up to the council modifying, um, the rules. I, I, I don't see why it wouldn't.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would, I would very much like to talk about modifying those rules. I think that, you know, COVID-19 cases are still on the rise. We're probably going to be on this for a little while this way. And we've gone way too long without providing appropriate access for public comment, especially with how much access we provided in person for our residents and partners and stakeholders. So, um, I, I would, I don't know how we go about, do we have to make a motion or what? But, um, I'd really like to see some type of way people can sign up to call in to the meeting.
Especially, no, no more motions tonight, but, um, a discussion I don't know, a future agenda soon. If we can't, we'll show for it next week. How about that?
Yeah, and if you want, if, if you're looking at just modifying it for that public comment portion to maybe mirror it the way that the public hearing testimony goes, um, we can, we can look at maybe, um, putting together some, uh, ideas on what that would look like.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, I like that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other possible questions, but?
Oh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I have one more thing.
One more thing?
Uh, I was curious if we had any update on any like new grant opportunities for small businesses? I know that like the last fiscal year, there was a like really quick deadline one, but that there might be an opportunity for this fiscal year, um, partnering with the state and things like that. I don't, I don't know, I was just curious if you had any, any news?
There's one, there's one grant process going on now. It's kind of named, and Alyssa or Keith will know, but everyone else will pay. But there were like 500 applications.
Oh, I thought that was still for last year's or for the last fiscal year, I guess I misunderstood.
This year, but it was 500 applications nationwide. And so locals are applying, I don't know, we've got a chance, first would have it. Take out the new date on that.
I'm, I'm talking about the state, the partnering with the state one.
Okay.
Keith? I, I can, I can answer that question. Um, there, the, I believe it's the Mid Bolamid Valley Council or government that received a round two grant from Business Oregon, whereas the city, our, our grant program was from round one of their funding. Uh, they received several hundred thousand dollars of the same, uh, eligibility restrictions as our grant program was. And it is, I, I believe, still up and running. Uh, and it is eligible to any business with fewer than 25 employees in Marion, Pogu, Ginyam, Hill County.
I, I guess I'll, I'll touch on a conference call with the League of Oregon Cities today. Um, there's a big push from the league to get direct funding to cities um, in the next federal package that's being discussed right now. Uh, the concern was that, you know, monies went to the state and, and they were concerned didn't go directly to, to local communities. So, um, the league is advocating and, and pushing for the next, uh, which is being discussed in the federal level right now, uh, pushing for direct funding. But, uh, at this point, you know, what that bill will look like or, or what will come. Um, all I can say is, is that the National League of Cities, um, which is part of the Oregon League of Cities, but the National League of Cities, that's the conference call I was on today. And that's what they're advocating for and trying to get more direct funding straight to, so it come directly to us, not through a subsidiary or through another organization. But, but again, at this point, um, that isn't in part of the funding, but they're advocating for it and, and pushing for it. So, uh, that would be something to look for and, and we're monitoring. These are part of some of the fun conference calls we're on. But, uh, there seems to be some advocacy even, um, from, from both parties. But at this point, it hasn't made it into the actual, um, bill itself. But, um, that's something we're just going to watch and see. And I think, Council Hook, that's the, the best answer to your question, whether there's going to be another round is, is really what comes out of the federal government.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate your question.
Anything else, Chief? Yes, Melissa, anything?
Nope.
All right, so let's, uh, let's think about call number nine, it's 480. And, uh, we spent over 25 minutes of this. So if there's nothing else, one, two, three. We're adjourned. May you have a pleasant day, a pleasant week, and stay safe, ladies.
Everyone, thank you.